All right, all right. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Yuba City City Council for October 19th, 2021. I would need to read a few virtual information here for those who are joining us online. Governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19, AKA the coronavirus. While the governor recently issued Executive Order N-07-21, which lifted certain orders and associated restrictions, there are still public health directives in place. Executive Order N-08-21 also allows local legislative bodies to continue to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. How to participate in a virtual meeting. This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for a live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question and answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on during the public comment of each item. Staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Espinola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
Tonight, we will have an invocation inspiration by our Vice Mayor Dave Shaw, and we'll have a pledge of allegiance to the flag by our Chief of Police, Brian Baker.
Our Heavenly Father, we just thank you for today, and we just thank you for this beautiful country that you've given us to live in. Father, I just pray that you would just give us wisdom beyond our years, and let us be humble in all things that we do as we do the people's business, Lord. Let us have your direction, your guidance. In Jesus' name, amen.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and thank you, Chief. We don't have any closed session items. We did not have closed session this evening. Any modifications of the agenda, and if not, approval? Seeing no... Okay, we're approved. Item number one, we're going to have several presentations tonight. The first one is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I'd like to invite Rosa Zuniga, a council advocate from Casa de Esperanza, to come forward, please, and join the rest of the council up in front of the dais. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, and whereas domestic violence leaves an imprint of fear and hostility, and whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but across all economic, racial, and affectional preference, and social barriers thereby affecting society as a whole, and whereas in the county of Sutter, adults and children are victims of violence each year, and whereas the city of Yuba City is committed to restoring the right to freedom from fear in our own homes, and whereas in our quest to impose sanction on those who break the law by perpetrating violence, we must also meet the needs of victims of domestic and their children who often suffer grave financial, physical, and psychological losses. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mark Boomgarden, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, and on behalf of our entire city council and the city of Yuba City, recognize the important work done by the domestic violence programs in cooperation with Casa de Esperanza, Inc., and do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Together as a team, we can make a difference in creating hope, health, and healing in our community. This can be done through prevention, intervention, and education programs, which create zero tolerance for domestic violence. On behalf of the council, we would like to provide you with this proclamation. We also would like to offer you the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you so much, and the families and staff at Casa de Esperanza would like to thank you for your continued support.
We will continue to support, and that's for sure. We very much value the work that you do in our community. Thank you so much. Salim Sandu.
here. All right, welcome. Thank you for joining us up here. Whereas Salim Sandu is a native to the Yuba-Sutter area and currently a student at River Valley High School, and whereas his passion for baking and natural charisma launched him onto the Food Network stage, and whereas he was chosen to participate as a contestant on the Kids' Baking Championship Series Eight, excuse me, Season Eight, and whereas his delectable desserts and passion for life shone brightly amongst his competitors, and whereas we are proud of Salim's spirit and Yuba City roots, may his zest for life serve as a true inspiration to us all. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mark Boomgarden, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council and the city of Yuba City, do hereby commend Salim's outstanding culinary and personal accomplishments, and urge all of the city of Yuba City residents to join me in recognizing Salim's had-do for his success and participation on the Kids' Baking Championship, Season Eight, and for representing his passion and the youth for Yuba-Sutter on the Food Network, done on this day, 19th day of October, 2021, in the city of Yuba City, County of Sutter, State of California. We've got a few things here for you, so hold on. First, a copy of the proclamation for you.
There's people that probably want you to hold that and take a picture. If you wouldn't mind sharing with us a little bit about why you did and how you did and everything else at the council?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you for inviting me here too, to give these things and recognize me for this. And yeah, it was just fun. It was a fun experience to go out there and do all that, and I'm glad that I got to represent my city as well.
If you wouldn't mind sharing with us a little bit about why you did and how you did and everything else at the council?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you for inviting me here too, to give these things and recognize me for this. And yeah, it was just fun. It was a fun experience to go out there and do all that, and I'm glad that I got to represent my city as well.
If you wouldn't mind sharing with us a little bit about why you did and how you did and everything else at the council?
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you for inviting me here too, to give these things and recognize me for this. And yeah, it was just fun. It was a fun experience to go out there and do all that, and I'm glad that I got to represent my city as well.
If you wouldn't mind sharing with us a little bit about why you did and how you did and everything else at the council?
What's your favorite recipe? I'm just curious.
I really like the turtle cake, I do. I think that's a really good one, yeah.
You're more than welcome. Drop it off.
Definitely, definitely.
You're welcome to come and eat with us. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. All right, an Assembly Bill 953 presentation, and I'd like to invite Kim Slade, our police lieutenant, to come forward, please.
Yes, I'll just come forward. I think you guys can sit down and go to bed.
Stand here for a moment.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor, City Councilmember, Lieutenant Salim, Yuba City Police Department. So tonight, I'm giving you the, I guess, informational brief on the... There you go. Better. For the Assembly Bill 953, which is Racial and Identity Profiling Act, which for an agency our size is mandated January 1, 2022. Obviously, AB 953 was enacted in 2015. First agencies took place in 2018, so we're falling into that Wave Four, which is the last wave, which is any agency that employs between 1 and 333 sworn peace officers. Some of the requirements, this requires the collection and reporting of certain stop data related to detentions and searches, so it's not related to every police contact that an officer may have. During the detention or search, the stop information's date, time, duration, location, reason, was the stop associated with the call for service, or was it self-initiated activity, any action that may have been taken, such as a search, anything like that, citation, was there any contraband located or property seized based upon the result. So perception is exactly what it is. It's a perception, and the perception is perceived at that first initial contact with the person. It's not after somebody gives us an ID, after they identify male, female, white, Hispanic, anything like that. It's what the officer perceives within that first initial 10, 15 seconds of a stop. And then the requirement based upon the officer is the years of experience and the type of assignment that they're working. And when officers are reporting the data, the officer is given a unique identifier that is only known to our administration and nobody else. So not even the State of California DOJ, they don't know who that officer is and who the information's associated with. Some definitions, so detention, it's like we talked about before, is a seizure of a person, can be verbal, physical, or it can be actions. Search, it can be a person's body, property, any property under their control, pat-down or consensual, and then a stop is defined as any detention or any interaction resulting in a search, including calls for service. Reporting requirements, so there's some unique things as we go into this, as far as reporting requirements go. So you have multiple officers, only one officer submits a stop report. And then same with agencies, so if we have multi-jurisdictional cases or anything like that, it's the agency that's responsible for the investigation that's doing the reporting, not us. So there are some unique things there where we have like net five, so depending on where the boundaries are and who the case agent is, that's going to be determined on who's going to actually be doing the reporting. And then it says must be based on officer's perception, just like I talked about before. It's not after they find out the information, it's before they actually find out. So as we go into reporting information, a perception cannot be wrong. So even if I'm standing there, and upon the first perception, I might identify somebody as a male, and I make contact with the person, and the person's actually a female, I still in my stop report identify them as a male because that's what my perception was. So some of the exceptions, things to think about, vehicle passengers, as long as I don't have any contact with a vehicle passenger, I don't have to report on them. So if I stop a car and my only interaction is with the driver, that's the only person I need to do a stop report on, not the other five or six passengers, two passengers, juveniles, anything like that, that are in a vehicle, I don't have to do. Large-scale events, traffic control, things like that, like if we're coming up to Seek Parade, I wouldn't have to do it on every single contact that I have, because otherwise that'd be 80,000 people I might be talking to in that given day. Routine security screenings, some of that that we've found out that is a benefit to us, routine security screenings will be very helpful for Troy, so when he's doing homeless things, first thing in the morning or throughout the day, if he's just asking people to move along, that is not considered a detention. Mass evacuations, active shooter, DUI checkpoints, probation searches, and other things like that, those aren't reportable. Confidentiality, per the Assembly Bill, officers shall not include any unique identifying information about themselves or the stop persons. So I can't identify anybody by a moniker, what I'm reporting addresses, I can't say 12, I responded to 123 Main Street, I have to be more generic, like an example of saying that I responded to the area of Main and Morton. And the reason for that is, is because they don't want people that are doing data searches to be able to search a residence or search a person, to be able to go make contact with that person. So, and seeing some other unique identifiers, date of birth, address, California ID numbers, anything like that. Currently DOJ provides a four-form reporting report, so if you can imagine that every stop that an officer had to do would take four pages. With that, we saw that obviously that's very time-consuming, and we have traffic officers that are making anywhere from 10 to 25 stops a day, so that would be filling out these that many times. So what we did is, we went out and did some research, and we secured Veritone Contact, which is a very user-friendly. We started using this October 1st of this month, and at this point, the officers have had nothing but positive feedback about it. It's very user-friendly, they're going through it, and on average, the officers are taking about one to two minutes to do a contact. The traffic officers, since obviously they're doing it more frequently, most of them are doing it just a regular traffic stop in about 30 to 45 seconds. So, and when you're doing that anywhere from 10 to 25 times a day, it does make it streamlined. So the pricing on this is, it's $100 an officer per year, so obviously we're slated for 68 officers, so that's the cost associated with it on an annual basis. So, I'll check that out, if there's any questions?
Questions from the council? So if they had to fill out the four-page report versus the Veritone, how much is the savings in time? It sounds like it's phenomenal.
It is phenomenal. I would say that if you had to go through and fill out these four pages every time, and even if you don't use the page, you need to make sure that when we do the submission that it has all four pages. So, you know, if you're having to do this by hand every single time, and I will honestly say that penmanship is a lost art, so that's another thing in reviewing these, that it makes it very difficult, so if I had to kick them back or I had to do all those things, obviously the software makes it much easier. You're talking at least, it cuts it at least in half, if not more.
Plus the storage of the paper.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I may, sir.
Sure.
Sir, obviously the Veritone, that makes the process a lot easier. However, the concept behind it all, I've got a little bit of an issue with, and that's not on you at all.
Absolutely.
A lot of this stuff we track, who you stop, who we stop, who we don't stop, what, well, I should say we, you, why you do it, their race, their gender, their ethnicity, all this stuff, right? So that, in theory, that all that information goes in a database somewhere, so someone can evaluate to see if you're being targeting certain people or profiling certain people or being improper in your contacts.
Absolutely.
Okay. So with that being said, whenever I read this information or I see these stats out there, it seems to me that when you read them, everyone is assuming that the officer is a white male. Not true. Is there anything built into this process that will clarify that?
No.
No, thank you very much. That's unfortunate.
Yes.
There we go. All right, Lieutenant, thank you. Good information, thank... Oh, did you have something? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add, good point, Councilman Harris, I can see it from that perspective, but I've learned...
It's ridiculous how they do that.
Well, I'm glad that you brought that forward. I didn't think of that, and so I appreciate that, because seeing the people that work for our city, I see variety. How safe is the software, you know, for people getting into it or breaking into this software? Is it, how's it connected into our system?
It's connected, we have access through a third party, so it's, the information is stored in the cloud and it's processed through DOJ, so whenever we take in the information, we screen, it goes through our screening process, after we're done, and we say everything looks good, there's no unique information in there, the officers have filled out all the information, we send a direct file to DOJ.
Okay.
And then DOJ obviously accumulates it all and puts it up in their annual...
Awesome. So do you review it before it goes? Are you the person, the contact? Okay.
Yes, there's three of us at this point that are reviewing it.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, move to item number four, which is the appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in our meeting. Please, public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be considered at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group members. Of the public will have three minutes to speak. Do we have any comments from the public here this evening? Seeing none in the room, how about online?
No public comment.
All right. Onto the consent calendar. All matters listed under our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. I do have a speaker card here on item number nine, so I'm assuming that we would like to pull that from the consent calendar. Are there any other items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar at this time? Online?
No public comment.
Okay. With the exception of item number nine, which we have a speaker card for, action from the council.
For the mayor, oh.
Sorry.
For the mayor, I move that we approve items six, excuse me, five, six, seven, and eight.
Second.
Okay, have a motion to, on items five, six, seven, and eight. Do I have a second?
Yep.
Second, all right. All those in favor of items five, six, seven, and eight being approved, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, five, six, seven, and eight are approved. Item number nine, and Ms. Espin, please.
Miss, you've been very generous, thank you. Good evening, council. For the record, my name is Heather Essaman, 2020 Lincoln Road, Yuba City, so I'm a Yuba City resident. First of all, this isn't number nine, but thank you very much for wearing pink since it's October. I assume that's what it's for.
I will, I will say that you might not be able to tell from there, but Mr. Shaw did the same thing. He's got pink polka dots.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's hard to see from here.
We won't talk about his underwear, but...
That's not my three minutes, right?
And I'm wearing a pink jacket, so...
Yes, that's true.
It's pretty pinkish, I think we all have some pink in somewhere, yeah.
That's good. Okay, so I wanted to comment on what happened, I think it was two weeks ago when there was a discussion, and I beg to differ with Vice Mayor Shaw. I was actually at the Planning Commission meeting, and I spoke to at least one of the commissioners after the meeting, specifically about this topic. I'm afraid that the understanding that I got in the room, as well as from both sides, there were two gentlemen on either side, that were basically trying to point to the fact that the Planning Commission and that function is there because of a check and balance system that needs to be adhered to whenever possible. So you're all reasonable people, I'm sure you feel that you're very ethical and would represent the city, and I do think that you've done a very good job, although I can't say too much about Councilman Kirchner because he doesn't speak too much during the meetings, so we appreciate a little bit more of that, but the, that isn't always the case, that won't always be the case, and I think that's the reason why Councilwoman Espinola said we need a sunset clause on this. If you're not sure how a C council could end up in disarray, please look at Live Oak. It's a disaster there, people were elected and they can't get along. You can't assume that everybody's going to be, that's going to be elected will be as ethically minded as you are right now. And by passing something like this, the problem you're going to have is there could be somebody at some point wanting to do some development, thinking that, and I read one of this, that the likelihood of an appeal to the CC, if another review process is used, was listed in the actual language. Basically, they just have to say, well, I don't think the Planning Commission's going to approve this, and come to one of you and ask you, can you please pull this? You've got seven days. They know they have seven days because they're paying attention to this. And then that person pulls it and comes here and says, this is very important, we need to make sure that this gets through. There needs to be a check and balance on everything, and there's a reason why that was set up in the past. So, and I applaud Councilwoman Espinola for voting no on this. I understand what they were saying, and I still have not understood why you, as a council, are doing this. I didn't get that in the last few meetings, they didn't understand it either. I think that's why somebody had mentioned something about power plays or things like that, and that's where he got that information, but that wasn't, there's a check and balance system that is set up in place, and it shouldn't be changed. Just wanted to tell you that. You can do whatever you want, obviously, but...
If you don't mind, I'll address, and then I'll pass it off to the Vice Mayor. Number one, I think there probably could have been better communication between us and the Planning Commission in regards to why this council considered that option. It has to do with our priority of being business-friendly. There are some procedures that are in place that somehow sometimes get in the way of allowing a business to get into operation in Yuba City, and frankly, in this case, and no disrespect to Councilwoman Espinola, I know she knows that I respect her, the majority of the council felt that it was very important for us to be able to clear a path for businesses that want to come in, even if they're controversial. It takes three of us to execute on that particular item to bring it forward, so it's not just that any one of us, myself, the Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Espinola, Councilman Harris, Councilman Kirchner can make that happen. It takes three of us, which is a majority. Do I think it's going to be executed on frequently? No, I do not, but there are occasions where, and we've had occasions here in the past, where it probably would have come to us anyway, so why stall it out? That's just my personal opinion, and as a member of the council, why I voted in favor, but I would obviously give Councilman, or Vice Mayor Shaw, an opportunity to respond. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Totally agree. The reason we brought it forward is because of past practices and things that were very disturbing with prior planning commissions when this was originally brought up, was the implication that they had more authority than what they actually do, because everything the Planning Commission approves, they actually make a recommendation and we approve it. And so there was a misunderstanding of what the roles were, and then when you get controversial projects coming forward, and we almost had one this past year, and it ended up not coming up to the council, business-friendly, why go through the mechanism of making the developer have the extra time to, it's going to be heard here anyway? And the pro- have the extra time to, it's going to be heard here anyway, and the process stays the same? There's no steps that are bypassed in the planning department, any of the reports, any of the hearings. If it's going to end up here anyway, and three of us feel that it's going to be here, then why not just go ahead and go right to where it's going to end up? And to your latter point, I agree with what you said as far as we're ethical, but what happens when we're no longer here? After the meeting, Councilwoman Espinola and I had a discussion, and we need this to stay in place, but my exact words to her, and she agreed, was let's keep it in place, but let's work on maybe setting up something to maybe, you know, do a review process. Anything that we have, we should be constantly reviewing it periodically, and we do that. So, you know, that would be something this council could take up to maybe this is a policy we review every five years or so. But not just sunset it so you have it today and it's gone tomorrow, and then you have to go back through the steps of re-putting it in. But every policy should be reviewed, and I'm not against that. We work very well together, but I don't know what's going to happen more if we're all not here. So there does need to be the checks and balances. The use of it will be very minimal, but there's more to the story than just we're trying to follow procedures and checks and balances. There are checks and balances, and even with the express lane, as I call it, there's still plenty of checks and balances right there as well, because it goes through the same process, because your legislative body is these five. Everything that comes from the planning commission is a recommendation, so.
Through the mayor, thank you for bringing up your comments. I really appreciate every opportunity that you go up there. I always learn something from you, so thank you for doing that. You know, when we originally, at least, and I'm just doing it my recall and memory here, when we originally developed this process of this policy, there, there were many concerns. So there were, you know, there, there was tremendous amount of changes when we first came on as a council, and so understanding, as Vice Mayor Shaw says, this express lane to help, you know, stimulate development and bring in businesses, et cetera, I was very supportive of it, and then we had a sunset clause, so I understood that there was an ending time set to this particular process. And there was, there was development occurring and changes occurring in the planning commission as well, so there was a lot of growth going on in the city at that time. And so my, my main concerns are expressed by what you said, you know, to why I don't support this, and I'm not going to, you know, consent to the consent calendar item on this one, but because of that concern of not knowing five years, 10 years, when is this going to be one of those policies that you take off from the shelf or whatever the file folder or somewhere in the cloud and bring it forward to remember to update it or change it? And as much as I like to think everyone is always on the ethical and with integrity, unfortunately, there are people that sometimes don't function that way, don't practice that way, don't work that way. And so it brings concern to me in certain, in many more areas than just the sunset clauses and the checks and balances. There's other areas at this point. So I, I think we, we, as a council and as our city staff, and with the commissioners, the planning commissioners, we have a very well organized, defined roles, expectations, all those things are there in play. It's taken us over two and a half years, even through everything else that we've all experienced. But this could easily go awry when things, other factors take into place. So that's my concerns as well, and yeah, review it five years? I don't know if I'll be here in five years. I don't know if you'll be here in five years. I mean, it's not about a reelection, it's also about if you're alive or not alive in five years. So there's multiple other things in life that we don't always control. So I, I'd just like to add that.
Any other comment from the council? Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment on item nine? Anybody online?
No public comment.
Okay. Back to the council for possible action on item number nine.
Through the mayor. Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by the Vice Mayor, second by Councilperson Harris, on item number nine. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have four to one pass of item number nine. We will now move to item number 10, rescission of the Lincoln East specific plan. This will be presented by Ben Moody, our Development Services Director.
All right, so good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. And so this is before your second time, so this is consideration of approving an ordinance to rescind the Lincoln East specific plan and waiving the second reading. And so we're bringing, bringing this forward. Again, it's for a public hearing, it really could be a consent item, a business item, a public hearing, but really with it affecting so many people, we wanted to bring it up and should the public, you know, reinforce the chance to speak on it. And so I'll power through the presentation since it's been before you. It's regarding this Lincoln East specific plan, the area bounded on the south by Boge, George Washington on the west, Franklin on the north, and generally the Harding-Sanborn on the east area. And so it has a long history, 2004 and into the present. And so where we've really landed is we want to keep the land use plan and the technical studies that have been done behind the scenes to go from kind of paint on a board to more in-depth. But what we want to lose is a lot of the problems that was caused with this, where it was, is created in a vacuum. In that vacuum, after the, the boom, the, the economy was booming and there was different, the pendulum was swung to this, this point where it's just not sustainable. And so where we're at 12 years later without growth or multiple years later is we're running into these problems with the development agreement requirements, the biological and ag mitigation requirements that are put in place, the affordable housing components not lining up with where we're at today, just the utility policy that we have now with our underground utility policy, development phasing conflicts because it was originally intended with a big developer versus the small developers that are coming through, et cetera, et cetera. And so, so what I'm here before you is to, with staff recommendation, is to propose rescinding the plan to help facilitate development in that area, and that planned development going forward would then be consistent with the city's current standards. And so it's not that nothing's in place without this going forward, but we're going to treat it like another development in the city of Yuba City, it's going to be analyzed per current standards, and then also come to this matchup with this land use. And so this, and that's where I want to just point from last time, some of the questions is that really with that land use staying the same, that's where the intent of the plan is more memorialized. And so when we, when we do the individual development review, the, the land use needs to match up without a change coming before the city council and the general plan amendment, and those technical studies are there where there's triggers for the roadways, the road wits, that we really look at to make sure that we have well-done development. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. Before we open it up to public comment, any questions from the council? All right, I have a speaker card from Ms. Espen.
Sorry. Yeah, so for the record, I live in that area. If you could go back to that slide that says changes on it, you can see, or stays the same, either one of those. So I did mention a couple of weeks ago when we had this on the topic, that during the planning commission meeting, and I'm glad Mr. Moody's here, that he mentioned that the section just north of Boge, and I think that's Reed going up, it was kind of like a little L shape, which would include public, the blue and the green, which are parks and public areas. It sounded like somebody was interested in developing in that area, and he called it something ranch. I can't remember what the name is. So if that's the case, and if this plan is causing problems for us to get that developed, then definitely we should rescind it. That's fine. But then we need to make it part of the public record that if that's the reason why you're doing it, in addition to being a bit archaic, that we make it clear that we are accommodating development in the city and not, then all of a sudden, this goes away and suddenly there's development there. That's because that's not the message that he was giving to us throughout this presentation. He was saying that nobody's interested in this area. So which one is it? Is there nobody interested in the area? Or is there a ranch development that might potentially come in that area, and maybe there's a reason for it not being able to work very well because this plan's there? And that's fine if you want to rescind that. But remember, the blue's there and the green's there, and that has to be somehow planned and integrated into that. We can't keep developing in ways where we end up with no parks at the end and no schools in the end. We have to make sure that when development gets done, that we have enough funds for that. We don't have enough room in our high schools. We don't have enough parks. I've been in discussion with Mr. Moody for something that Mr. McIner had. There are parks listed that we have, a municipal service report was done, and in there, there's three parks listed, and these are not parks. That acreage was attributed to our city, that's not part of our city. Those are not our city parks, and yet that was attributed to us. So we don't have as much acreage as Lafco seems to think we do. So I think it's important that if they're going to develop and you want to develop in there, go for it, even though I'm going to be impacted. I think that's fine because I might get a park out of it, but then make sure when you're changing this, because you could change the zones as well as you can change this once this is gone, that we don't forget there needs to be a school if that's what the plan is, and there needs to be a park if that's what the plan is. Please don't forget that. Thank you.
May I ask you a question? So those, those areas that you're saying are listed as parks but aren't parks, were those joint use facilities with schools?
One of them was Gibiki, so that might be, is that a joint use facility?
Yes.
Okay, and Walton Park, do you know what that is? Know where Walton Park is?
Yes.
Okay. Is that a joint use facility?
That I don't know.
And the dog park? Does the city do anything with the dog park?
That I don't know.
We coordinate with Caltrans on their behalf.
Yeah, that's Caltrans, I believe, and I believe that is a private, like a nonprofit that is running that, and they usually want fundraisers, they do fund raises for funding, so.
I, I do know, and, and if Mr. Moody might be able to recall, is there used to be joint use agreements with the school districts, and I know Diana probably remembers these as well, and then all of a sudden the schools were locked and we lost those areas for public use. I'm not sure what the status of that is right now, but that's always been a concern to me, is that we, I'm speaking specifically of places like April Lane, et cetera, that I think were counted as parklands, and please tell me if I'm wrong, but I remember those as from my history with the city. So I, I, I'm wondering if those are, if, are those some of the types of things that we have lost due to the school, for security reasons or whatever their reasons are, for closing those during non-school hours?
You know, I, I can't speak to much of that. I guess what's going through my mind is yes, do we have some joint use agreements, Twin Rivers Charter School, how they come into the backside of the park on Clark or Graither. You know, we have some joint use agreements with the Little League Baseball Park, and we, we have some of these with, like you said, on April Lane where after school. So I definitely defer, I, I guess going forward with development, the development, so I guess I don't know how to address quite what we've lost. You know, when they put gates up for security reasons and what those joint uses, I suspect that we have probably lost some access there that was, that was open. But going forward, the city still implements development per the general plan, which says, hey, you need to have a two-acre neighborhood park for every thousand residents. You need to pay impact fees for this many acres going forward per the general plan. And so, so the accounting on what's existing versus going forward, it definitely probably needs to be reviewed, and we're looking at that on, on some of these different databases that haven't been reviewed, maybe where they're accounting schools as parks or not. And so we're in the process of looking at that and updating what we have existing to start matching up. But going forward, we look at it per this plan and per the general plan, that still says we want a two-acre, a neighborhood park for every thousand residents, et cetera.
So the question that was raised, and it's a good one, I think, in, in regards to this particular area, is is there interest in developing? I, I think that was one of the questions that was posed this evening, and that, that interests me. Is that, is there interest in that? I guess it would be the southeast corner.
Yes, absolutely, and I'm glad it came up. It came up last time, it shouldn't have been mentioned on this one. And so what spurred a lot of this to come up is that this is, this, the Lincoln East specific plan, as we've discussed, it's been in the work since 2008, 2010, when it was adopted. In 2019, we actually received a map from a property owner, a tentative subdivision map application here at Bog and Stewart Road, so over two, two and a half years ago, that came in. And what we found out through review is that we can't approve it. You could, you could approve it and say, follow, you know, it's only conditioned that it's part of the Lincoln East specific plan, but it was so burdensome that it wasn't real. You couldn't really develop it, you couldn't really do it. And so, so over the last two and a half, three years, that plan has been set stagnant, really, as the city staff's changed and we've looked at trying to figure out our processes with the underground utility policy, why we've looked at rescinding this plan and figuring out environmentally how to handle that. And so that's where we're at today, is that this is one of the steps in the strategy to move forward with growth. And so there is, there is a, just to be clear, there is a subdivision map that's been in to, application since 2019, that's going to be heard for, at the planning commission next month. So on November 10th, currently we're publishing a notice that there is a subdivision map here that will be considered for 95 lots, 96 lots in here, in accordance with this zoning and this general plan use. And with that, they're conditioned to annex into the city, because right now it's not into the city. So there's a subsequent application to Lafco. Lafco takes a little bit of time, it's probably going to be another two to four months before it's considered there. But there's an application, the property owner, they're calling it the Buck Ranch, and the Buck Ranch, they own, they own all of this area, probably, you know, I don't have it right in front of me, but if, if I had to project, it is kind of like an L, where it comes over, comes down, and then it's over. And so their application is in to annex it all in once. And so that doesn't mean development will occur, but it means that they're trying to annex it all in, so they could still grow peaches or the prunes that they have going on. But then, but the development that they're considering right now is this map that was here since 2019. And so with that, we're analyzing that map and reviewing it based on city standards. And so happy to add to that. And definitely with the consideration, is where staff and Lafco needs to be, is what are we going to do? You know, the county wants us to square things off. We usually don't like to jog around, right now it jogs around the temple, we want to take the entire road so there's not a, a gap in the, the maintenance franchises, so we don't have that issue. And then are we going to square this off so it comes across? And so that's some of the stuff that's behind the scenes that we're analyzing.
But a condition of development would certainly be impact fees that would go towards parks and schools and, and all those things.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so with that development, that's going to come before the planning commission, they will have to pay impact fees, they're adhering to the road standards, everything in there about our drainage and utility requirements, and there's a neighborhood park requirement in there.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, comment from the, other comment from the public? Anybody online, Ciara?
No public comment.
Okay, back to the council for potential action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance of the city council, Yuba City, Yuba City rescinding ordinance number 006-10 for adoption of the Lincoln East specific plan, SP 04-02, and waive the second reading.
All right, I have a motion from Councilperson Kirchner, a second from Councilperson Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, item 10 passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Moody. City home buyer program guidelines revisions presented by Ben Moody, Development Services Director.
Okay, so, so I have to put my housing hat on for this one, which gets me out of my wheelhouse for sure, and so I've requested the Regional Housing Authority, and so Becky Flores and Executive Director Gus Pracera is here to help answer any questions when we get into it. And so I'll kind of go through this, but we could definitely get into the weeds at whatever level the council desires. And so what we have is we have a program, it's a first-time home buyer program, which is a pretty cool thing, but it's made up of a hodgepodge of funding sources, state Calhome money with different. But it's made up of a hodgepodge of funding sources, state Calhome money with different allotments, CDBG money, and then also federal home money. And so in that, it's a program that basically allows individuals who qualify based on their income level to have a, pretty much a real low down payment with a real low interest that's deferred. And then, once it goes in to help people buy an approved home, and then if it gets paid off, when it gets paid off, it's a deferred loan at 30 years. And so at some point in time, the house is typically sold, and then the loan is paid off, it's in second position, and then it comes back into the program and we reissue the loan out to new people. And so what, what's been relayed to us from RHA, who helps coordinate that on the city's behalf, is that we're struggling with getting the loans out. And so with the, with the inflation in house prices, with the low interest rates that are out there, what we used to think were great deals, 3%, you know, down payment and 3% loans, is not as competitive anymore. And then a lot of the problem is, with the price of the loans, there was caps of $75,000, and it would just, it wasn't, it wasn't really usable. And so we have the money sitting in the bank, earning pretty much zero interest, versus maybe, hey, what can we do to help use this money and make it more usable for the program? So with that, RHA's team went through and made some recommendations to us. With the city having, with it being the city program, we have a Home Buyer Program Guidelines, a policy that basically we follow. And so the changes that we're proposing is to no longer restrict it to $75,000, and we're going to set it with the amount changes with home updates and cannot exceed first mortgage. So increase maximum loan amount to the current home subsidy limit. So this gives us a little flexibility, so we're not here every year saying, okay, is it 76 now with inflation, or is it going to be 80? And I think with this one, it's a substantial change, it goes up to 200. It depends on your income bracket. But I think if you're a four-person and really low on the income scale, I was looking at the top bracket, it might be, the current home subsidy limit, there I have it up in the corners, 276. You might have to be very, very low income in order to make that amount, but that would be the upper limit. And so that would do away with this conflict with the $75,000. We'd reduce the interest rate from 3% to 2%. There's a little discussion on this one, to be honest. Hey, do we go down to 1%? You know, I struggled with this one a little bit, just to keep up with inflation and to recirculate back into our program, because we do get payoffs and buyoffs. But what was happening with the money right now, we were getting a lot of, they're getting the rates cheaper than 3%. And so I kind of landed on the 2%, so we were getting a little bit of money, and inflation wasn't quite as bad. Reduce the down payment from 3 to 1%. You know, really, we're trying to get money out to low-income individuals, and we're really saying it's deferred for 30 years. So, and it's secured based on the value of the property. And so we agreed, staff agreed with the reduction with this, based on that reasoning, and to propose it to the council. And then specify, there's some stuff about specify health and safety repairs agreed by the seller. I'd have to lean on Becky for that one. And then remove modest housing requirement, that's another one. It was a little, the interpretation of modest housing, there's some stuff talking about it had to be a two-bedroom, one-bath. And with the limit on the market availability for homes, you can't necessarily find a two-bedroom, one-bath anymore that fits all of this criteria for the loans. And so we wanted to just do away with that requirement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and then we're looking for, adopt a resolution approving the revisions to and adopting the City of Uba City Home Buyer Program Guidelines.
Thank you. Can you go back one slide? So if it's no longer restricted to 75K, what is it restricted to? Do we know, or is it just open-ended? Hi, Becky.
Hi there. Becky Flores with Regional Housing Authority. Thank you, Ben, for that presentation, and to answer your question, Mayor Boomgarden. So the limit of $75,000 right now is low. I will point out that the three-bedroom subsidy limit of 276,482 includes, in addition to the loan amount to the borrower, the activity delivery fees and any other grants associated. So I don't see a scenario where we'd actually be lending that amount to a borrower. There's also purchase price limits that are in place for the home program and the Calhome program. For example, the home program restricts the purchase price to $309,000 right now. So there's no way we could lend that much and be below the first mortgage loan amount. We would exceed $309,000 pretty easily. So I did want to make that clarification. So your average loan amount, I've got a home buyer in escrow right now. They qualify for $110,000. This actually fell out because the home did not meet our standards. But, you know, if a family qualifies for $110,000 on their own, and you add $75,000, they're looking for a home for $185,000 plus whatever they can put down. There's just really nothing for sale in Uba City for that price range. If I could get them to another $110,000, so now they're in the 220 ballpark, and again, the city loan can never exceed the first mortgage amount. Remember, the city loan is a second lender in these transactions. They're going to go to a bank, qualify for whatever they can on their own, the city will come in with gap financing. But we can never be more than the first mortgage lender. Now, this same family can qualify for something in the low to mid-twos. And there's, you know, a little bit more available for them. I'm not going to lie and say there's a lot, because the housing market is very, very tight everywhere in this region right now. But there are some. And, you know, this same family will benefit from just this change in the program guidelines.
Thanks for the information. I guess I was trying to figure out, are we really helping by doing this? Because, you know, house prices here seem to be going through the roof. And, and so there is, there is the ability to at least place a few folks to take advantage of this program, in your opinion, then?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, we're keeping an eye on the market pretty regularly. When listings do come up, you know, that aren't already pending, we'd be sure and let our pre-qualified buyers know. So once Regional Housing Authority certifies their income, they have six months to buy. And so there's a window there. And we do assist them with that process. And as we see listings come up, we let them know right away. A person on Ben's staff with the Building Division will come out and inspect and make sure that the unit meets the city's standards, you know. And sometimes they don't. A cash buyer could come in, swoop out from under them, and they don't care, they'll buy it as is. But we're doing everything we can, and we feel like these guideline changes will, will help.
Okay, thank you. On the interest rate, are you able to fluctuate that, based upon what's going on in the market? I mean, right now, you're, I believe you're correct, is that, you know, the market, the interest rates are pretty low, but if all of a sudden that changes, do you have to come back to us to change interest rate?
My understanding, there are rules, so we can make it how we want. Right now, it's set as a fixed rate. And so we would have, if we adopted straight at the 3, at the 2%, we would have to come back to change.
Okay.
Becky, I don't know, please. I don't know what the cap is with HUD or some of the state guidance on that.
Well, the home program actually recommends 0% for many cities and counties, but 2% is not unreasonable. 3% is not competitive anymore, believe it or not. And I was explaining earlier, you know, when I wrote this grant for the, for the city, you know, back in 2018, who knew we'd be where we are now? So, you know, 2% I don't think is unreasonable, but you could go 0%. You know, unfortunately, that would require you coming back to the council and make that change.
Okay. That was really my question, is are these interest rates always going to have to come back to us, whether they go up or down? And it sounds like yes. Okay.
Yes.
Other questions?
Through the mayor. I wanted to know, Ben, what is the total amount of funds that we have available?
You know, so that's a good question. We were just trying to do the accounting on that beforehand, just because of the multiple funding sources and the loans out there. And so I'm going to give you rough numbers. We have about 120-plus loans that are out in place right now, with about $5 million, 5.1 in the portfolio that's out generating our 3% interest. Right now, we have about $750,000 from different funding sources. I would lean on, you know, between CDBG home money, between the federal home, between the various state home programs that come together, so about $750,000.
So currently, we have 120 folks out there that were helping in one way or another?
I, I think what Mr. Moody is referring to is your, your current loan portfolio, people you've already made loans to. You know, that, that's indicative of what they have already in loans that were made. And in terms of money to make new loans, that 750 is correct. And it's split between the city's Calhome account. As loans pay off, as Mr. Moody mentioned, that money sits in an account and can be relent. And then you also have some money through the home program that's coming through payoffs. And then we have new grant money through the 18-home grant, and then CDBG. So various pots, little bits.
The total's over about $750,000?
Yes, that's correct.
Of all those? And plus the interest? Whatever interest is paid of that?
So there's not much interest on the money in the pot?
Okay. Yeah, because I've heard of the interest in other jurisdictions, like you mentioned, a 0% to help, you know, assist very low-income families with, you know, establishing homes and getting themselves, you know, in that situation. Is there a way to kind of have a varying, you know, percentage, but once you lock it and it's there, you know, as a, as a person who gets that particular loan? Can we start to say, I'm throwing out a number to you all, gentlemen, you know, like 0%? Let's not charge that 2%. And hopefully, we can get some folks, you know, some loans and help them get homes that are so expensive to buy. I've been waiting for the market to go down personally to buy myself, but yeah.
So the only thing to add to this, that went into the thought, is that when they get the loan, it's deferred for 30 years. And so that means when you get the loan, technically, the person doesn't have to pay that portion of the loan for 30 years. And so where the interest comes in, a lot of times that I see come across my desk, is where they refinance or they sell it, and then that's paid off with the sale. Not to say that that money wouldn't be recaptured by the seller, but that's, that's where, I just wanted to clarify to make sure that I was certain that nobody's paying the monthly bill on these most of the time.
And if I could add, Mr. Moody, that, you know, you're correct in that they don't make a monthly payment, so it's not impacting them on a monthly basis. The city will recoup their principal plus some interest at loan payoff, and it does end up getting used to assist more families. So that's just something to keep in mind, that if you charge 0%, that's just going to be less money coming back to help future families. You know, so that's something also to keep in mind, that even 1% or 2% accrued interest can build up that fund, and then that money gets used later on to help more people.
So we have, I'm just trying to get the number of 120 since when? From the beginning?
That's when we just pulled it straight, you know, out of our finance software. And so, you know, I think it goes back to 1986, you know. But a lot of these are 55-year, 30-year loans.
So how many have we done since 2019?
Are you talking about first-time home buyer loans?
Just loans through this program.
Oh, I just put that figure together for a grant application the other day. I want to say we've done 14, maybe in the last three and a half years.
That's good. Better than zero, I'm happy to hear.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we've really seen a drop in the last two years.
How do we, so your office handles that for us, so you're able to give that directly to clients? Is that how that works?
Yes, we have an agreement with the city so that we implement the program on the city's behalf. And then everything comes back to the city for approval. We do have a loan committee here at the staff level that Regional Housing Authority will make loan requests to for their consideration, and it does get approved by the loan committee. So we aren't acting independently of the city. The loan is with the city.
Okay, so you're saying a 2% is reasonable?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the council? How about from the public? Any other comments from either Ms. Flores or Mr. Becerra? You're good? Okay. Online?
No public comment.
All right. Back to the council for action, please.
Through the mayor. I move that we adopt a resolution approving revisions to and adopting the City of Uba City Home Buyer Program Guidelines.
All right. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, a second by Councilperson Kirchner. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, item 11 passes unanimously. Future, thank you, Ben. Future agenda items, any items from the council to, thank you very much. Any items for our future agendas? Seeing and hearing none? All right. Reports and communications, number 13 will be the city manager's report. Glad to see this reinstated. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. I have one item to report on tonight. The Mayor's Leadership Institute is reaching its final class this Thursday. We've had roughly 10 participants. We've had some folks that have come in and out of class due to some work obligations, but staff has done a wonderful job. Executive team has really taken the opportunity to show these individuals a lot of great things that are going on in the city, and we're able to answer a lot of questions. And as you know, on Thursday night, the mayor and the vice mayor will, will participate in a hot seat round of questioning from this group, which I think will be, I think will be very entertaining. And then, secondly, I just wanted to follow up with you, Mr. Mayor. I think I heard, and maybe I'm wrong, that you would like the staff to bring back maybe an update on the city and school facility use agreement information?
Yeah, I think that, you know, historically, school grounds were open, and they were, at least in my recollection, anyway, they were, they were classified or, or considered as parks.
I just wanted to confirm.
And then, yeah, the school district, I think, for various reasons, has locked those facilities, which precludes our citizens from using those, so they should probably no longer be considered joint use facilities. I don't know what the current status is.
We'll bring that information back, and that concludes my city manager's report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the city manager before we move on? All right?
Yes, sir.
The, the Leadership Institute on Thursday night, is it 5:30?
If you're going to participate, Councilman Kirchner, it's 7:00. The class starts at 5:30, however, we'll have the mayor and the vice mayor there doing round robin questions, and then after that, we'll have the graduation.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. We're going to start city council reports this evening, and our leadoff hitter is Councilmember Kirchner.
Through the mayor. Thank you. So I learned I need to speak up, or more often, tonight. I do agree that we do need more parks in our city. And as I've mentioned to my colleagues before, I think it's kind of sad that the current veterans park that we have is essentially just the side of a levee. In my perfect world, it'd be something a lot nicer than that, so thank you for your comment. I've had a really busy last two weeks, and a lot of that was based on our last meeting here with the item, agenda, item 15, and the, the public that showed up to talk about that. I've been inundated with, and I'm sure you have too, with emails, text messages, and it's exciting to see our community being engaged and being a part of that process and responding to those emails. So that's been fun. I'll start off with mosquito vector. Typically, this part, this point of the year, in October, is when things slow down, so they're pulling, essentially, they're pulling the traps out of the orchards. We did approve a contract for janitorial service for three-year term, approval of purchase for a one-ton, four-wheel-drive pickup cab. We did the quarterly review of the district's defined benefit plan investments. Everything's looking good, so they pushed that, pushed that back to, for a couple more months. We did do a closed session to discuss the written findings of the performance review of the district manager. And we all, we're all in agreement that the district manager's doing an exceptional job. And so he's going to, we're going to continue honoring the four, the fourth year of his five-year contract. In addition to that, he's going to be eligible for a 2.5% merit increase from step six to step seven of salary, salary range. step seven of salary range. The mosquito traps are, the count is low. No new news on the West Nile front, other than that Bu County tends to be the highest in the state for some reason. Moving on to Gilseizer. We did, we passed an adoption of a resolution to become subject to the Uniform Public Cost Accounting Act, MT 3872. The second item was adoption of a resolution authorizing a Sphere of Influence Amendment to accept the annexation of the Newcombe Ranch subdivision into the Gilseizer County Drainage District, MT 3882. And what was interesting about that is it's not, it just went out of my head. It's Newcombe Ranch, it's not, oh, it's the Bog Stewart. So the thought, my thought was, we were going to talk about the annexation of the entire Bog Stewart. What came out of that was it's just the Newcombe Ranch subdivision, and then moving forward, any developers, if they want to be considered, will have to apply for that. So that's what came out of that at that meeting. And that's all I got.
And thank you for covering that meeting. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Harris, your turn.
Yeah, I have even less. It's actually been a slow, despite the numerous emails, it's been slow meeting-wise. I did, I didn't manage to go to the coffee with a cop over at Clark Avenue Coffee with our chief and a good chunk of his staff over there. I think it was well attended by the public and also much appreciated by the public. It was a very good event and effective, and I hope there's going to be many more. Regional housing, everything was pretty much routine. It's moving along really well. They've acquired enclosed escrow on some property out in Kalusa, going to be constructing some low-income housing out that way. And Sabuca, I was sick that day, but I did, was able to attend virtually. Glad that process was in place, and they had a major celebration for the final certification of the 200-year flood protection for our community. And of course, the work continues for the west side of our community as well. Then I will let our vice chair of Sabuca elaborate if she would care to. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Esmondola, your turn.
Thank you, Councilman Harris. It was, I'm glad you're feeling better. I'll just lead off on the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency. This work has been in process since 2010. It is a huge accomplishment and a moment of celebration that we all gathered together to certify this 200-year flood protection certification. And understanding that two or three people, or even more, Francis Silva, who passed on but at 99 was able to, hopefully, he's seeing us from another place, the accomplishment that we were able to bring together, Barbara Levake, Al Motna, Sally Sager, many other local community members pulled together this Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, JPA. And to be the first in the state for this 200-year flood protection certification is a huge accomplishment and something that we were all very proud of. And yes, we still have to certify and work towards the south end of it, and we also have on the other west side, Meridian, that there's work to be done to continue protecting our levees. So that's a big accomplishment for all of us to share in. I also attended the Regional Water Agency 20th anniversary, a lot of celebrations, it seems, in the area of water or in protection. And that was a really nice event as well. And talking with people about our, how do you say that? Aquifer, aquifer storage recovery. I'm getting better at these things. I'm going around and talking to people about our storage water underground needs, and we're going to be, it's going to be raining here, hopefully, as soon as we leave or after we get home. And, you know, where can we store that water at this point? So those things are really important. And so talking to a lot of people, and there's this number of $9 million that keeps popping up about Yuba City needing this, and who knows, gentlemen, we may get there someday. They started in 2010 with Sutter Butte's flood control. So that's a good example to say that we can do that here in our community as well. And then today, attended with our mayor, and I'm not going to get too much into the details of it, but it was really good to be together with our fire chief, Alexander Police Chief Baker, and our city manager, Dave Vaughn, talking about our safety and really kind of bringing up the discussion about concerns and where we're at now and where we're heading in our emergency services. So I thought it was a really great discussion, and the points that I learned from our meeting, mayor, and I'm sure you'll add to the discussion or share here, you know, the, one is inform our community about what we're doing. Two is training our city staff, making sure that everyone knows their rules, what it is, how to function. And third is these emergency operation centers. How do we function under these operation centers? And so I want to thank everyone for doing the work that we're doing, and it was really informative, and I hope that we can continue this ad hoc committee. There are some really interesting and great ideas and projects and collaboration regionally and within our cities. So those are the main things. And I just, I want to say that I thank the community for giving me your insights, not just on cannabis. Thank you. I have other people talking to me about, wow, it's great to see that there's development happening in the city. And wow, look at the good work that's being done within the homeless area. There's a lot of, and they were upset, there were some people, folks upset the month before about water rates, but all of a sudden, they're really okay with the water rates because they're finding out that these water rates are going to take care of their water and fix some of the treatment in some of their other areas. So it's good to hear a lot of variety of response from the community. And I have always been open to talking with anyone. You want to sit down, have a conversation with me, I'm happy to do that. I'm planning to maybe start a little open hour, office hours in the city, so anyone wants to drop in, you're more than welcome to come and see me. Instead of sending me a text or an email, you can come and actually see me and talk with me, so we can figure these things out together. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor Shaw, your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last couple of weeks, been all about taxation and IRS and FTV for me. I get busy over the next two weeks. I've got RWMA Transit and Cap to Cap next week. Just an update for the upcoming RWMA meeting on Thursday. Three of the four major municipalities have already approved the JPA, and Marysville's the last of the four big ones. If they do approve it tonight at their meeting, then the amendment to our standing JPA for Regional Waste Management Authority will be effective basically November 1st. Livoke is looking to take their action once the new council member is seated, when they go through their election up there. But under our authorities, the, if the four majors, that's what has to happen. So Marysville will finish that up tonight, and that's all I have to report.
All right, thank you. Got several things to report out on. First is kudos to the city staff for the mayor's institute. I think that, you know, the folks that have been involved have learned a lot that they probably would have never been exposed to had they not participated. And I think they're going to be able to provide us with feedback on how to even make it bigger and better than it was. I've had an opportunity to attend several of the sessions, and you can tell that they're engaged, the folks that are involved, and the staff that's presenting is also engaged in sharing what's going on in their city. So kudos to all of that. I think that, as the city manager mentioned, we have graduation on Thursday. We're also offering the opportunities, kind of like Dave and Mark Unplugged. I'm a little worried about that. Not really, but we'll see. We'll see how that goes. I think it's only fair that those folks who have taken the time out of their day and evenings to attend get to ask us questions. Attended the badge pinning this afternoon for the police department. Thank you, Chief Baker. Exciting to see your crop of leaders emerge. You know, excited about what's going on over there in the PD, as I am with all the departments. Attended the Sabuca ceremony, and as Councilwoman Esmondola mentioned, you know, special thanks to Francis Silva, Barbara Levake, Sally Sager for being really the, on the forefront of that. But I also want to make sure, I hate to use the word shout-out because it's used too much, or you rock and all that stuff, but they, you know, there's folks in this room, Diana Langley, I know you and your staff with Public Works have been instrumental. The financial analyst or person from Sabuca specifically called out our finance department for the assistance they've given through the years and taking care of the billing. So there, you know, and there's been past city leaders as well, different folks that have sat up here in this dais that have helped Sabuca. And, you know, obviously, Al Motna has been mentioned, and there are many others that need to be notified or noted for their contributions. But to have 200 years of flood protection, and as it was told to us, we're the first area that's got that, you know, that's really significant. I don't think people, a lot of people probably don't realize that. I had an opportunity by virtue of an invite from our, by Brad McIntyre and Mattie LaFon and Jessica Peters to participate in a Make-A-Wish event for Queen Juliana on Friday. This is a young lady that's had some health problems. And, boy, I really, I want to give a shout-out to the staff. You know, they made a special day for a special young lady, and I was very privileged to have the opportunity. As I mentioned, you may have read, you know, there's a lot of stuff that isn't necessarily warm and fuzzy when you're a city councilperson, so it's those moments when you have that opportunity to share, and those that I think are really neat, so. Gilseizer, again, thank you, Councilperson Kirchner, for sitting in there. I had a last-minute business thing that was going on. I had an opportunity, I was invited, to record a piece for the upcoming Community Hero Awards that United Way is putting on, so that'll be coming up here shortly. Just on our behalf, thank these folks that they're going to recognize for their contributions to the community. I know, Sean, you did that in the past as well. LAFCO meeting was canceled. As Councilwoman Esmondola mentioned, we had a very engaged and good meeting on the status of emergency planning here in the city. Very, very confident in Chief Brian Baker, Chief Jesse Alexander, and the efforts they're leading in trying to catch up and get our city back to a place where we can do the very best that's possible for our citizens should an emergency occur. Kudos to the city manager and the rest of the staff and the department heads for making it a priority. These things, as I mentioned in the meeting, have a tendency to be kind of rollercoastery. You know, there's an event, and everybody gets all energized, and then it kind of falls away, and what we're trying to do is get level set here and do a really good job for the people that we serve. Other than that, I think that's all. I would like to close this meeting in memory of Mike Sanchez. Judy Sanchez is a valuable member of our team. She supports us. She supports the city, and her husband unfortunately passed here several weeks ago, and this was a, I'd like to close this meeting tonight in his memory. Thank you.